The uh waiting room in thanks.
Okay, everybody's in. Let me know when you're ready Brendan.
Yep, we're good to go.
Good to go. Okay, okay, good evening.
Others maybe having issues.
What's that?
Heather.
We just lost Heather. Why don't we wait a second?
Yeah, I'm bringing her back in right now.
Okay, I can wait a minute.
There you go.
All right. All set? Okay. No?
No. No, she's not there. Now she wants to come back in, so we'll see.
No, she's trying.
Coming in. Okay.
I mean, no more, no more buttons.
Okay, all right. Okay, so good evening everyone. This is the March, excuse me, session of the Brighton zoning board of appeals. And just a couple of quick things. We have only one application to review tonight, so we will along with that in short order here. But first, Mr. Di Stefano, can you call the meeting door?
Schwartz.
Here.
Ms. Thompson's right?
Yeah.
Mr. Mites?
Here.
Ms. McKay Drury?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Primo? He's let the record show that Mr. Primo is not present.
Okay, and Rick, was the meeting properly advertised?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it's advertised in the Daily Record of February twenty fourth, twenty twenty two.
Okay. Minutes, what do we got?
Minutes, I apologize. Um, I did, I did receive January minutes a few weeks ago, but unfortunately, um, they got lost in my box and I wasn't able to get them out to you. Um, so they'll be in your next packet and hopefully along with the February minutes. So we'll have to handle those at the March meeting.
Oh, okay, that's right.
March meeting.
I'm sorry, at the April meeting.
Yeah, and then maybe you can send them a little early separately or something, then people could have more time to read it. Okay, very good. So, uh, other than that, is there anything you want to talk to us about, Rick?
Just, um, I did receive a letter late this afternoon in regards to application three A O one twenty two. It was from property owners at twenty one seventy seven East Avenue and um Greg Bell, who was also representing the G E T C Association, that is the Board Association for the condos that backs up to forty five Grosvenor Road, which is our, our application for tonight. Um, he has just some concerns and comments in regards to the placement of the generator. So we can talk a little bit about that when we get into the application if you so desire.
Okay, and maybe he'll be present.
Rick, did you email that letter out to us?
No, it came in, it came in very late, so I wasn't able, I didn't want to, you know, burn you guys by something else that you might have missed anyway. So that's why I'm just explaining that we received it late.
All right, well, we could also put it up later if you want, I guess. Well, let's see if the gentleman is going to be here to speak and then we'll go from there, okay? Okay, anything else?
Um, just for the record, application two A O one twenty two has withdrawn, so that is removed from the agenda.
Okay. Very good. Okay, well, at this time, I guess, uh, we can begin.
Application three O one twenty two, application Mark Campisi contractor and Eric Bach owner of property located at forty five Grosvenor Road for an area variance from section two O three dash two point one V six to allow, to allow a rear yard generator be located in the northwest corner of the rear yard in lieu of the rear yard behind the house as required by code. All this is grabbing application and plans on file.
Okay, and who do we have speaking for this application?
I am Mark Campisi.
Hi, Mark, can you just give us your address for the record, please?
Uh, six O seven Phillips Road in Webster, New York.
Okay, great. So proceed then, please.
Um, what we're looking to do is, uh, you know where we'd like to have the generator located in that back corner. It does meet the side and back, uh, clearances off the property line. Uh, I did get a call from, I'm going to get the wrong terminology, the property manager possibly for those townhomes behind the property. Uh, he expects a few concerns about the noise and everything. Um, I did go back and get the permanent, well, drawings for the landscaping and on the west side of that property line and on the north side, uh, they will be planting, uh, giant, they're called giant, green giant arborvitae's and they start off at seven feet high. And that will encompass that entire back portion of that property and then the side heading north uh, to aid in that, uh, both visual and any potential sound, uh, that there might be, uh, from the generator.
And that, excuse me, Mark, so what you're saying, it'd be like a ninety degree projection of those? Okay.
Correct, along the rear property line in the north.
Okay, just want to make sure it's clear to everybody. Thanks.
And I can answer any questions that, uh, you may have on, uh, the decibel rating on the generator or any of that.
You want to just go ahead and discuss that, just?
Yeah, um, in the information you have, um, the generator, uh, decibel ratings were listed at sixty seven. Uh, and this is a large generator, however, that sixty seven decibel rating is the same generator that your neighbors might have that they bought at Home Depot. Uh, any twenty two KW generator is just as loud or quiet as this generator is. Uh, this one has a few advantages with a better sound enclosure. It only runs at eighteen hundred RPM and not thirty six hundred RPM. Uh, is a typical residential generator is so, uh, going to this size generator did help with a lot of those, uh, issues that, uh, might be addressed from that.
Okay. Um, do you know how far away the nearest structure is from the location of this generator?
Uh, well, I know that there is a shed to the north of the property. I believe it's, I don't know the address, uh, but the one property in the north is a shed that's going to be the closest and then probably the other closest might be the townhomes to the west.
And could you approximate the distance?
Uh, from the townhomes?
Yes.
Uh, seventy, eighty feet maybe?
Okay.
And that's a guess. I mean, I guess I could try and get that, uh.
No, that just approximation is fine.
I would say seventy or eighty feet.
Okay.
Uh, the exhaust on this generator, uh, the gentleman that called me today and I apologize for forgot his name. Um, he was concerned that, uh, it might echo back there, uh, but the exhaust on this style generator goes straight up. So it won't have that ping ponging sound, if you will, bouncing off of the brick wall that's back there.
Okay, Heather, have you got questions?
Um, I was hoping to have some clarification about the discussion and the application of, um, pre-existing plans for the pool, pool equipment and generator. I just wanted clarification. Are you talking about pre-existing as input in place by a previous owner and the project was started? What do you mean by that?
Um, well, this is all, um, a new build that started last year for the pool and everything. Um, honestly, when we were called in to quote this, uh, the pool was probably ninety percent done. So I don't know if they had someone else that started the project and get the, I don't know, but when we got to the work, you know, everything was already started as far as the pool was in, the walls were in. Um, so we had to get going kind of quickly on beating the landscapers to the, um, stonework and everything. So this is all new construction, I guess, if that answers your question.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, board members, anyone else with any questions?
Yeah, I'm curious, Judy, where are the utilities on the house itself? If the generator were placed appropriately behind the house, where are they in relation to that?
Uh, well, uh, the gas meter is in the basement in the front of the house and the electrical meter is in the opposite corner. It would be the, uh, southwest corner, uh, comes, it's an underground service off the pole and the meter is on that side of the property.
You know, um, how the decibel rating of this type of a generator compares to the decibel rating of like a pool pump? Because there's obviously already going to be significant equipment in that same area. So just from a, a sound intrusion perspective.
Right, I did check with the, I did check with the pool people, uh, apparently what they have there is the quietest pumps that are made on the market and are available. I don't have any decibel ratings, but, uh, that was a concern in the owner and, uh, apparently they had a conversation. So, uh, the pool equipment is as quiet as can be purchased, uh, but I have no values for that. And this generator, um, is the same decibel rating as any other generator that you would find um, anywhere that you could purchase anywhere. It's the same rating, sixty seven decibels at full load.
And when is it going to be making the noise? Is it only going to be when the generator switches into use when the power is out or more frequently than that?
Uh, it is set up to just run, uh, once a week for ten minutes, uh, just as an exercise. Um, and that can be programmed to be done at any time. Certainly would be most likely during the day is not to cause any, you know, disruption to anyone sleeping. And then, yes, of course, when power is lost, it will be on.
Okay, other questions for Mark?
Yes, I do. Um, Mark, so you said sixty seven at full load decibel rating. That's with a level one sound, a level one sounding closure.
Uh, correct.
Your sub middle showed a, a level two sound enclosure, which would have had a sixty three decibel rating. So have you changed the, um, sound?
No.
A one or?
No, I'm sorry, it is a level two. That's my error. I apologize. It is, it is a level two enclosure, so it's slightly quieter than any other generator you've ever heard run. If you've heard any generator run in anyone's neighborhood, uh, it's a little, going to be a little quieter than that then.
And I, I just want to re- remind the board that when they do, uh, sound readings for generators, it's done at twenty three feet from the generator itself. Um, so it's not like it's sixty three right at the generator. It's sixty three at twenty three feet from the generator. So i- it's, it would be louder if you were standing next to the pool pump and next to this generator, you're not going to hear the pool pump. You're going to hear the generator. But level two enclosure is pretty good.
Yes.
I, I have another question. Could you please repeat why there shouldn't be a concern with the sound of the generator bouncing off of those brick walls? Could you?
Um, what they, what's the, uh, the landscape plan is on the west side of the property, uh, behind the pool equipment and generator, and then also on the north side, um, of that same equipment. Uh, they're planting what is called a green giant arborvitae and apparently these start out at seven feet tall and they will help buffer any of the, uh, sound that is made from, uh, either the pool equipment or the generator. And again, that generator will just run once a week for ten minutes unless power is lost.
Okay. So other questions for Mark? Okay, very good. All right, we thank you for your presentation. So at this time, uh, is there anyone on the Zoom call that would like to speak regarding this application? If you would, just put your hand up or the chat function there.
Rick, um, this is Ken. Uh, could you just, uh, put into the record, um, the correspondence that we have received, just so it's part of the public hearing record, please, just, uh, the stuff that has already been circulated first?
Yes, we have received letters, um, from property owner at twenty one seventy five East Avenue in opposition of the request and a letter from, uh, James Kylie, who was representing property owner from thirty Grosvenor Road, who had some concerns regarding the request. And then again, the letter that I see later today from Greg Bell, um, who is representing the association, the condo association. His address is twenty one seventy seven East Avenue with questions and concerns regarding the generator location.
And the first two pieces of correspondence that you mentioned um, have been posted to the, uh, town website and circulated to the zoning board of appeals members. That last letter from Mr. Bell, um, came in so late that it could not be circulated or posted. I was wondering if you would mind reading that into the record so that the zoning board of appeals members can have the benefit of understanding what was said in that letter.
Sure, it is, it is a link, it is a lengthy letter, so.
Can I interrupt for one moment? I did not receive a copy of the first two letters, Scott.
No, it wasn't in the packet. It was attached to the final agenda that went out yesterday.
It was.
So if you get the final agenda and you, and you scroll down, it's attached.
Yeah, that's right below it.
Um, when you say lengthy letter, are you mean, uh, do you mean, uh, more than, uh, three, three pages or?
No, no, it's, but it, it's lengthy. It's a, it's a single, I think, almost a full page.
I think it's fine to go ahead and read that into the record just so that the board members can hear.
Yeah, that's fine.
Sure. Um, again, this is from Gregory Bell. Mr. Di Stefano, my wife and I are the owners of the townhouse located at twenty one seventy seven East Avenue, a condominium in the Grosvenor East Townhouse community, which is located directly behind forty five Grosvenor Road. I'm writing on behalf of G E T C Association and its Board of Managing Directors, of which I am a member. We are requesting that if the application for an area variance from, from section two O three dash two one B six to a rear yard generator located in the northwest corner of the rear yard is approved, it be subject to conditions that protect the quiet enjoyment of my property and those of my neighbors who own the property located, oh, excuse me, who own the properties behind forty five, forty five Grosvenor Road. Other members of our community may be submitting separate objections or comments. Personally, I spent a lot of time on our deck and currently work from home, from a, from a home office, both of which directly overlook forty five Grosvenor. While this variance request did not relate to the large pool, lighting and brick surround that the lighting and brick which surround the owners and their contractors, I'm sorry. While this variance request does not relate to a large pool, lighting and bricks surround that the owners and their contractors have been building over the past year or so. It is relevant to our concerns about the generator and its location. They have applied for a variance for the fifty K watt generator to be located near the pool equipment in the northwest corner of the forty five Grosvenor property facing our property about as far from their house as it can be and behind a brick wall that separates it from the pool and house. This raised troubling questions as to whether the property owner expects that that it and the pool equipment will create noise that will disturb them or their guests, but without concern as to whether it will disturb their neighbors. This, the wall could easily have been continued around the pool, around the pad to build a full enclosure for a full enclosure for whether disturb, full enclosure for the pads for the generator and pool equipment. The, the ladder of which has now been installed on the pad as pictured in the application. As it is built now, it will reflect and possibly amplify noise created by the generator and equipment. For us, the proposed variance also raises a question about whether the intended use of the generator would be for the, for emergency power outage purposes only or for some other purposes. If it was just to run the house, why was it placed about as far from the house as possible? The fifty K watt size of the generator also seems inconsistent with residential use. There's been no attempt by the property owner forty five Grosvenor Road to communicate with any of the owners of the properties of budding their property or with the board of managers of our condominium association or our property manager during the prolonged construction period of this project. A lot of our objections might have been avoided if they had. We believe the contractors should have sought the variance before the construction of the wall and pad were complete as zoning requirements are clear. But instead of applied after all construction and preparation for installation have been completed. It is also clear that it's not just the generator that is in question, but also the pool and its equipment. We and our neighbors in the Grosvenor Townhouses community fear that this project will, will will in the end undermine the quiet enjoyment of our own properties. The variance is granted. We would request that, that it be conditioned on additional soundproofing to be added to through full enclosure of the generator and pool equipment or otherwise. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay.
Thank you, Rick.
All right. So has, uh, is there anyone on the Zoom call that did want to speak regarding this application?
Finally, that was the gentleman that did, uh, call me today and if I could address some of the points in his letter.
All right, hold, hang on.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, okay. Do, do the board members have any questions related to what the letter said? Because generally, Mark, we don't like rebut things back and forth, so, um, do the board members, are they clear about what's been stated or are there questions?
This is more of a question for Rick, but I'd rather ask it now in case there's some kind of nation for the applicant. Um, the location of the pool and the location or dec- and decibel rating of the pool equipment is not before us at all. That is perfectly within code as it's being constructed now.
Correct.
Okay, and then the other part is, um, the location of the generator, the decibel rating is not requiring a variance. The, it is only the location, and if it were moved twenty feet to the south in exactly that same location, just as close to the townhomes as it, as it is now, but just thirty feet south, so it's behind the house, this would not require a variance. Is that right?
Right, that is correct.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so does anyone else have any questions at this point?
I do too. Yes, I'm sorry. What is the normal, or if there is such, but what is the usual decibel for a generator for a home? I know it depends on size.
Well, we, we have a maximum decibel rating of seventy two decibels, but to be honest with you, Judy, that is, um, outdated. And we very, very rarely see generators coming in now with seventy two or greater decibel ratings.
Yeah.
So what do you, what do we generally have?
Uh, sixty eight. I mean, some of the smaller ones that don't have these, um, uh, two, uh, level two enclosures. They'll run probably around sixty eight at full load. That's pretty common of what I've seen come in.
Right.
Okay.
Which is, you know, seventy two to sixty eight, when you're talking decibels, that, that's a fair amount of noise, um, change.
Thank you.
And we've, it's settled on sixty three decibels for this one?
Sixty three at full load with the, um, level two enclosure.
Okay. All right, all right. So is there anyone else that would like to speak regarding this application?
I just, I just have one other question. I don't know if, um, Rick or the applicant happen to know this. Do we know whether, um, any of the adjacent properties have generators?
Um, I don't know for a fact, Ken.
I don't.
I, I do not know.
Okay. All right, so if there's no one else that would like to speak regarding this application, then the public hearing's closed. Okay. So we can begin and discuss it. So why don't we just go around the room here? Uh, Kathleen, what's your thoughts here?
Well, I was hoping you wouldn't, oh, am I, yeah, okay, I'm not muted. I was hoping you wouldn't start with me because, um, I was concerned about meeting the standards because the neighbors clearly believe this will be an undesirable change. Um, whether or not it's true, I don't know, but they believe that it's going to be, have a negative impact. And I wasn't sure, I didn't see it in the application and I didn't hear it from the testimony tonight, um, to have an explanation of why it could not comply with the code. What I heard was that they prefer to have it someplace else, not that they would not find a way to make it compliant with the code and that bothered me. Doesn't mean I couldn't be persuaded, but I think with the negative feelings with the neighbors saying that it's going to have a negative impact, I am concerned.
Okay. Uh, Judy?
I know that vegetation can be a buffer, but I am very concerned really about that brick wall and the closeness of the generator to it. Um, and I, I, I really agree with a lot that Kathleen just said. I think it, you know, it's as far from the house as possible and almost as close to the neighbors as, as can be, so, thank you.
Okay, Andrea?
The only thing I want to point out is that it, it could still be as far from the house and as close to those behind neighbors and be in compliance. The real issue is just whether or not it can be farther closer to, uh, one East Avenue. One East Avenue is the property that's truly affected by the fact that instead of putting it right behind the house, they're moving it twenty feet and putting it in, in a portion of the yard that's not hidden by the house. To say that, that moving it there is a char- it's a character of the neighborhood, the noise would be the same to those people behind, you know, people living behind the home. It's whether or not that noise would be the same to one East Avenue. If, if one East Avenue had sent a letter or been here and was complaining that it was too close to their property, that would hold a lot more weight for me because that is, is the property that actually is affected by this move. I, I, I'm not saying that. I don't know if they've necessarily met the requirements and, and brought as part of the testimony, you know, that it's not undesirable change and that it's, um, least restrictive, you know, that they need. But I think I don't want to be distracted by complaints that would still be a complaint, even if they met every single letter of the code. If they put it exactly where code allowed it, I do think all of these neighbors would still be complaining that it's too loud and it's too far from the home and there's a brick wall. All of that is permitted under the code. The only thing that's not permitted is moving it twenty feet south or I get really confused about north and south.
Yeah.
North, right?
Yeah.
They're moving it three feet north. That is the, the variance they're asking for. I don't know. I, I think we can talk about it. I just would, don't want to be distracted by those side issues of it's too loud because it's allowed to be that loud. It's too close to the back neighbors. It's allowed to be that close to the back neighbors.
Okay, couple, couple of points and then we'll go to Heather here. I, I asked how far to the nearest, and I would say the nearest structure just happens to be a shed. But if we talk about the buildings or whatnot, you know, the, the reported was seventy feet. I don't know, I guess we could pull it up on Google Earth or whatever, try to calculate it, but it's a pretty, I, I know when I looked at it, so I wasn't measuring, but it's a pretty significant distance. And if you recall, when we approve a lot of these relocated locations for generators, they're within fifteen or twenty feet of another property. So this is significantly more. Okay, so just throw that out there. Heather, what do you got?
Um, I, yeah, I mean, my thinking was a lot in line with what, uh, member Ray just explained that, um, what we're analyzing is the, um, substantial impact or not substantial impact of the variance. And the variance that's requested is literally shifting it along that rear lot line a little bit further. And so therefore I don't think that, um, that that's a substantial variance. Um, and because of that, I've written this up as an approval.
All right, so at this point then, um, so Judy and Kathleen, have you any more thoughts related to this in the comments that either Andrew made, I made, or Heather made?
I, I have, I truly appreciate the comments, but I do think that the, the homeowner has the duty to clearly demonstrate that they meet those standards and I don't think that they did. I think, um, I understand that the problem is still there, but in order to get the variance, I, I thought you had to meet those five standards and I just don't see how they did. Um, perhaps.
The point is that moving it, what is it? What is it that Andrew has said?
Twenty feet.
Twenty feet north.
Twenty feet, moving it twenty feet north is the variance they're seeking. It's not distancing it further from their own house. That's not the variance they're seeking. It's not making it closer to the townhomes. That's not the variance they're seeking, literally the variance they're seeking, which is. which is what we analyze. If it's substantial, if it's going to have a substantial impact, is moving it twenty feet north along the same rear property line that they could do, because the requirement is that it has to be directly behind the house. And here, it's just that their driveway goes over to that side section. And so it's not literally behind the house from the front of this, from the front of the property. It's not behind the house. But that's all that we're talking about. I mean, I feel for people who might have a neighbor with a generator that might make some noise, but if the person could also just move it over twenty feet along the same rear lot line and do it without our approval, then it seems to me like it would be arbitrary to deny the variance just because we have a problem with the noise.
But I don't, I'm not talking about the noise. I'm just talking about the legal standard. I thought they had to meet, maybe Rick or Ken can correct me, but I thought they had to, we had to take into consideration the application itself says you must clearly demonstrates to the boards the following factors, and I don't see how they met those factors. That's all I'm saying.
Can you be specific on which factor it is you think they didn't meet?
Well, from the letters that were sent in from the neighbors, I don't believe that they were able to show that it does not produce an undesirable change in the neighborhood because direct neighbor said it changes our neighborhood in an undesirable way. Not by one person, but by, you know, again, we have free communications that say that. I also think that it needs to, they need to show that they didn't create this themselves, and I don't I did not hear anything that clearly stated why they could not put it in the backyard as opposed to they preferred to put it someplace else.
So as to the first standard that you're concerned about them meeting, I think that's what Andrea and Heather are trying to address. They're saying that the variance, moving the generator twenty feet to the north does not have a negative impact, at least from their point of view, on the character of the neighborhood, nor does the testimony or letters written by the neighbors show that because those neighbors aren't to the north. They are to the west. And those neighbors to the west would have the same impact, whether it was located twenty feet further south or where it's being proposed. So I think that's the point they're making is from their point of view, they believe that the negative impact is not there because it's a negative impact from the variance itself, not from the installation of a generator somewhere on the site. As to the self-created hardship, I wouldn't disagree with you, but it's not a necessary finding for an area variance.
That one is you'd like to find it, but if you find that it is self-created, you can still approve a variance on that one. The one, the one I think which it's fair to talk about is yours, we need to find that there aren't ever better options. There are other better options that could put it that, that would require no variance or a less restricted variance, but we have approved locations of generators or these things for, with a lot, with the same type of evidence, that there's a great location near other equipment that is shielded from views by, by fences or whatnot, and said that that's an appropriate place for it. And thus we think it is the, the best option for it. And, and their application says that, their application says that they think other locations in the yard that comply with code would be more visible to neighbors. Whether or not that's true, none of the letters from the neighbors, none of the presentations tonight disputed that, that, that they could put it somewhere else that would be less or more, less visible. I think that's what I'm kind of, you know, if it wasn't for these neighbors' letters, this would have been an easy approval for us, and those neighbors, those letters brought up issues that we shouldn't be considering. The noise and the location from the back, back ones. It doesn't change the fact that this would have otherwise been easy. Yeah, I think so, you know, based on, on what they're asking for.
Good. We have, and I know, Rick, you can comment on this too. It's fairly common, not so much with pools, but with air conditioning units and whatnot, that many of the applications that have we've received that cannot go in a rear yard because or, or closer to a lot line or whatnot are, are related to adjacency with air conditioning units and other types of equipment. Would you agree with that?
Where are the utilities are located? Yes. But, but also I think a little bit on Andrea's point, I think the things that they're doing to mitigate some of the concerns that the neighbors have by putting that, they don't, they don't need a level two enclosure. They could get away with a level one enclosure, but they're providing a level two enclosure to provide additional sound dampening. I think that's important, and that certainly can be a condition placed on them by this board. Also, the fact that they're proposing very substantial landscaping to help screen the generator. You know, that was another concern of the neighbors, what's, what the view, what am I looking at outside my window?
Right.
They're addressing that by adding these large arbiviti around it. So I think what they've done to mitigate the impact of its location is certainly something that we should consider, and we can certainly condition upon if we.
Sure, sure. And I think the arbivites at seven feet will help with the sound issue too, a little bit. It's not going to eliminate it, but it, it certainly will muffle it some. Those are substantial plantings at seven feet. Okay, all right. So at this point, Judy and Kathleen, do you, you feel convinced at all by these arguments, or do you stand on your comments?
I feel a little better, which is unusual for me, but, but
Okay.
It's, I still find it troublesome. I really do. I mean, as Rick knows, I have a generator behind me and, and my house is closed up tight winter time, and I know every Friday when that thing goes on.
Right, you know, Judy, that generator that you have behind you is probably closer than seventy feet away and.
Generator. It's old, I know, yeah.
And it's probably had seventy-two or greater decibel rating on it, so.
Very well be, yeah.
Okay.
Just procedurally, if we only have three, yes, we have to have four to approve this, correct?
Correct. That is correct, yes.
Okay.
So I, I'd like to say that I, if, if Kathleen and Judy are a no on this, I would rather, I would rather vote to table it till next, when, when we expect to have a full board next week rather than.
We.
Not act on it.
Yeah, Andrea, I have that, we can call the roll, we can call the vote, Heather can make her motion. And then if it is not, we do not have four, then she can make a second motion to table it.
Okay. That sounds like a. That's plausible there, yeah. Okay, are you willing to do that, Heather, please?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, please proceed.
Okay, hopefully I'll do it right. Just tell me.
Okay, we'll help you. No problem.
Because I, right now I've put some conditions in based on our discussions.
Okay.
But I don't know if they're going to need to be incorporated more into my findings of fact, so.
Well, okay. Okay, you're the shot.
I move that we approve application three A oh one twenty-two to allow a generator to be located on a cement pad behind a six-foot-high brick wall beyond the pool in the northwest corner of the lot where code would require the generator to be quote directly behind the house, end quote, based on the following findings of fact. One, the requested variance is not substantial because the generator would still be located along the rear lot line, albeit not directly behind the house. Will be blocked from the road by a six-foot brick wall and is located a fair distance away from neighboring townhomes in the rear, approximately seventy to eighty feet in distance. Additionally, the property has a pre-existing pool project with this area intended to screen pool equipment and the generator. Two, there is no other alternative that can produce the desired results as effectively given the existing infrastructure on this property, including the cement pad and the pool equipment location. Three, there will be no unacceptable change in the character of the neighborhood and no substantial detriment to the neighboring properties as a result of this variance because the generator will be less visible to neighbors in the screened location, including from the road in light of the six-foot brick wall. And there is grown in vegetation along the north side lot line as well as a plan to add vegetation towards the, along the north and west lot lines. Uh, the although the hardship is somewhat self-created in that it is part of the plan, the overall plan for the pool and pool equipment and generator, this is not a factor that mandates denying the variance. And five, the health, safety, and welfare of the community will not be adversely affected by approval of this particular variance request. Approval will be subject to the following conditions. This variance will apply only to the generator described in the application and testimony. It will not apply to additional structures considered in the future. And it will be subject to certain restrictions to ensure the quiet enjoyment of the neighboring properties, including the townhomes to the rear.
Can I just stop you there for a second? I'd be there for a second. Your first condition only applies to the generator as per plans submitted. Can we make a, can we be very specific in number two, that this generator shall be enclosed with a level two uh, sound enclosure? It's specific that they have to use the level two sound enclosure?
I was getting to it, but yes.
Okay, because I just, I thought you said, you know, kind of said that and.
Okay, now I know I'm, yeah, so.
All right.
Included for part of that first condition will be that the generator will be enclosed with a level two sound enclosure as described in the application.
Yeah, good, okay.
And as a second set of conditions, that the uh, time of the weekly ten-minute power-ups will occur between the hours of nine AM and five PM. There will be substantial landscaping to obscure the view of the generator for the neighboring properties. And that's actually it, because we moved up the level two enclosure.
So I just want to be clear, I got, and, and I would like to also add, all necessary building permits shall be obtained.
Right.
But let me just go through this real quick. One is basically the look, variance applied to this particular generator in the location as shown. Second condition is that the generator shall be enclosed with a level two sound enclosure. The condition number three deals with the landscaping along the north and west portions of the generator. Condition four is testing time between nine and five. And five is unnecessary building permits. Do I have that right?
Yes, that is correct.
And Rick, I would, I would just add some specificity to that landscaping to reflect exactly what the application says. So I believe that was the installation of green giant arbivites along the north and west boundary lines of the property in close proximity to the installation of the generator and the pads.
And you might want to put in too, Ken, that they were specified to be seven foot, because it makes a big difference.
Yep, I agree.
Um, I just wanted to say one, one good point that it might help Kathleen and Judy a little bit. One good point that Heather brought up as in her findings was that, can I say, not say anything, Ken?
Can we just get a second first?
Okay, sure.
Okay, Andrew.
And that would be fine time for discussion.
Okay, one, one, one big thing that Heather brought up was one of the reasons we've always had the generator behind the house, in the envelope of the house, was to screen it from the road. They're providing screening so that they are mitigating that variance request because they are screening it with the brick wall. So that is, that is something to keep in mind, that they are taking care of one of the reasons we like it to be behind the house.
Okay, very good. Okay, any further discussion? All right, Rick.
The motion is to approve. Um, Mr. Mike?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
No.
Uh, Ms. Schmidt?
Uh, Judy, don't, don't throw a, a sock at me, but my esteemed colleagues, particularly Rick's comments earlier were enough to persuade me, so I'm a yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
And Ms. McKay Drury?
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
Okay, very good. Thank you, everybody.
Judy, you were a sneak attack.
Pardon?
You were a sneak attack.
Hey, can we all agree never to talk? Can we all agree never to talk this much about generator?
Yeah. Well, you know what? I think Rick's going to fix this for us a little bit in the next code revisions, aren't you, Rick?
We'll see, but that's why you always hate to be the only application on the agenda.
All the time in the world to talk about it.
He's like, he's like the old man of the sea, has he warned us? Okay. All right, very good. So thank you, everybody. Thanks.
All right. Just a quick, April sixth, April sixth is our next meeting. I expect a much heavier agenda than what we saw tonight, so, you know, of course, you know, we're gonna, gonna catch up to us. So thank you, everybody, standing to be here. Everybody. In April.
And we're still, still here Zoom?
Well, that's what I was going to address. So right now, the governor's order extended through March sixteenth and only March sixteenth. The way things are opening up, there is a good chance that we will be back live and in person at that April meeting. So plan both ways. We're going to send the public notice. We have, we've created this sort of dual public notice now that says we're going to meet on Zoom unless we can't meet on Zoom, and then we're going to meet in person. So, and that's, that's the way it is. And whether we meet live or whether we meet on Zoom, we're going to start the meeting at seven PM.
Oh, okay. Will there be masks if we're in person?
I can't make that announcement because I'm not the supervisor of the town of Brighton, but you might be hearing something about that in the next few days.
But if we wish to wear one, we certainly could.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. In fact, it's going to be encouraged.
Good.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
Thanks for the update. Okay, everybody all set?
Yeah.
Okay. Have a good one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Bye.